9:00 PM, let's call the meeting to order with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, in the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States. One nation, unbroken, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I do expect our clerk to be here, but apparently she's been a little late as not unusual because of her work schedule.
I move that Trustee Lay stand in as temporary clerk until Mr. Cody arrives.
I'd support that motion.
I accept.
Motion by Rogers, support by Lannon, any discussion? All of, all in favor of Trustee Lay serving as a temporary clerk till our permanent clerk arrives, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. And with that, would you do a roll call of the board, please?
All right, let's just get this done. We have Supervisor Milky.
Here.
Treasurer Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Lannon.
Here.
And Trustee Lay is here. Trustee Thering is excused and Trustee Cody's on the way, or Clerk Cody's on the way.
All right, thank you. We have a fairly full agenda tonight, happy to entertain any motions.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion by Rogers, support by Brown, is what I heard. Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously. We do have a scheduled presentation tonight with Katie Mora.
That's correct, she's the President of Mid-Michigan Development Corporation. She's due to be here, I've not heard that she would not be here. Hope everything's okay. But I know we need to keep the meeting moving, so maybe you can move into public comment if Katie arrives. You could go back to the presentation or however you wish to handle it.
I heard footsteps. Oh. Thank you for that. So, moving on, that'll bring us to public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:02 PM. Hello?
Hello, am I live here?
I think you are.
Okay. I'm Rod Bauer with RCL Construction out of Sanford, Michigan. My address there, feel good with that?
It's helpful, for the record.
777 West Maynard Road, Sanford, Michigan, 48657.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a minute tonight to introduce RCL, myself and our self-construction to those of you who may not know us. And also talk briefly about compensation number five. We recently read low on that project with you. It's my understanding that there's going to be a recommendation presented to you tonight to work to another bidder based on your local preference policy. I just wanted to take a minute to point out to you guys that we kind of consider ourselves a local contractor. We've been working with you guys for the last 24 or 25 years. We built your original wastewater plant and we've bid on and done a lot of projects over here since then. We're currently doing two large projects for the city of Mount Pleasant at their wastewater plant now. We just finished one in Claire at the water plant. Farwell wastewater, Alma wastewater, Breckenridge water, so we're very much in this area. My understanding of your policy is that it is, grants the latitude to the board to award up to 3% variance on bids if you're within Isabella County. So, hope you can understand our frustration that we are 10 miles outside of Isabella County. Certainly understand you have the right to award to whoever you want, but just would like to, I guess, point out these things to you and ask for your additional consideration to award to us. I think the bid was 1,600 and some change difference. I actually have to take off right after this and I'm terrible with rejection anyway. Just wanted to get in front of you and I guess plead my case to you and say we appreciate the work over the years and it'll be frustrating if we are overlooked on this one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Nobody's online.
As the records show, nobody's connected online. Public comment is still open, if anybody wants to get up. See nobody jumping forward. We'll close public comment at 7:05 PM. Katie Mora still not here, so with that, we'll move to report board's comments. Current list of boards and commissions, appointments as needed, we still have the EDA spot open. And actually, I think we have an alternate on the ZBA as well. That one being probably less critical, but. Planning Commission, EDA and ZBA updates by Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. Nanny. I should say Director Nanny, my apologies.
Thank you. We had, did not have a zoning Board of Appeals meeting scheduled in April. We did have an Economic Development Authority Board meeting on the 15th. There was primarily discussion that the EDA Board looked at and discussed plans to reinstall irrigation along the Section 920 where the 2023 road construction removed that. And there was agreement to move that, those plans, and the next step would be start the bidding process to see what bid response we may get. The other item on their agenda was actually talked about at our annual meeting. Talked about some of the thoughts and priorities for discussion at the meeting the next night, on the 16th. Plan Commission also met the same evening, the 15th. They had a special use permit application on their agenda for short-term rental housing, the Airbnb-style rental housing. That permit was approved, in fact, the object we found have done excellent job putting that together. This was another case of an Airbnb that's already operating here. And they actually came to us to ask about any issues with ordinances, but they'd already been operating for a number of years. And so we simply helped them to go through the special improvement process, but everything's fine with their site. They also, they also had a start of a discussion on gunsmiths. We have gunsmiths in our ordinance, these are folks that are subject to federal firearms licensing, sell, repair firearms. We do allow gunsmiths in our, in the residential and the agricultural districts as a special use. Should be some, basically a home occupation activity, but it requires a special use permit. We had a discussion about the challenges related to hearing notices for this type of activity. Spreading, making it very public that this person has a number of guns potentially on their property. Sort of safety related, that's for both the property owner, the homeowner, the gunsmith, and for others. So, we sort of had a discussion about that and ways we might solve that. This came out of an inquiry from somebody who liked to get a federal firearms license to be able to sell guns, gun shoes, that sort of thing. And they expressed the concern, so we raised it with the planning commission. That discussion will continue, there was no decision made and consensus, but it's open to discussion. The, those were the items on the agenda, we also had a master plan update. And that was primarily to introduce the US 127 industrial corridor evaluation, the report we just received from the Florida Asian Association Chair of the Planning Commission. And there was some discussion on that as well. With that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions, no questions tonight. Apparently no questions tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Rodney.
That brings us to Board Member Reports. Treasurer Rogers?
Oh, well, I.
I'm sorry to get you off guard.
I was just brushing up my notes. The road commission met the day after our last meeting, two weeks ago. They went over a bunch of different contracts, life stones, things coming up. And then disposals of some of their assets, equipment and such. And it was kind of a short meeting, so. That was it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Lay?
Nothing. I am meeting with the intergovernmental meeting people at the end of the month, though.
And I noticed it was in person.
Yes.
So, intergovernmental, just for those that don't know, is a meeting remotely since COVID, essentially. And there was some discussion about trying to get this in person, and so next month, we'll be meeting in person.
And it's here.
At Union Township Hall.
Yep.
Trustee Lannon?
Yeah, I had an opportunity to attend a couple meetings last week. One was one that a number of the folks in the room here were at also. And that was the township's annual joint meeting that the various boards and commissions of the township get together and fill each other in on what's been going on in their particular areas of expertise. And a number of things that it does for us is we get to listen to the planning commission and see what they've been up to and what their visions are and things that are possibly coming down the pipe for the board to look at. As well as the ZBA and the Board of Review folks. And we were interested to hear from all these various commissions and boards to help guide us as we look into the future for establishing some of our priorities as we look at our ends and determine where to appropriate part of our budget at. So, wonderful conversation amongst all those township boards and commissions. Also had the opportunity to attend a meeting last week of the County MTA. They had their quarterly meeting at the Commission on Aging. And the gist of that meeting was bringing all the townships together and to plan for the future as to how to handle early voting in the primary elections, the congressional and the presidential elections, as there is early voting that takes place. And so, all the townships have come together, they're trying to look at areas that they may need to collaborate with one another to accomplish what's ahead of them. And they'll be talking about that much, much more. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Yes, I attended the last regular meeting for the Mount Pleasant City Commission, is Monday, April 14th, 7:00 PM. Just very briefly, a few things. One thing I want to point out in the consensus agenda that they had was the, I talked about this a couple, my last term, a couple of years ago, about that. The Pacer AI contract, the project that they do, they're looking at considering a renewal for that A C R A I contract for $18,000 for it. Kind of who, the park usage and public space usages in Mount Pleasant. I kind of thought that was kind of interesting that they're still working with that and getting some good numbers out of that. On their new business side, they adopted the 2026 goals and objectives, you can see those online, it's a list through the city commission, they do have that online. Another really cool thing, they designated a signatory, signatory, which was the assistant manager for the sister city exchange program that the city's done for many, many years with, I'm going to, unfortunately, they're going to be, Okaya Japan, I believe is their sister city. Now, Mount Pleasant, I found this information out in Jada, I found a very interesting one to bring up tonight. They're one of the oldest relationships in the state for this program, with the city of Mount Pleasant. I thought that was kind of neat, one of the two, I don't know if it is the oldest or the second oldest relationship doing this program. That was kind of neat. Another important thing, they also considered a contract, and it passed, with Williams and Works to perform the surveying, engineering, design and construction for the new city hall retaining wall up front. So, there's going to be some construction and stuff happening out there. That's my quick, brief update.
Awesome. We were just finishing board reports, the last one. Yeah, if you have anything you'd like to report. Sorry, I put you on the spot, you just walked in.
We did the election thing.
Yeah, we did the public accuracy testing, everything went good. The election committee meeting to approve the inspector list, we did that. And then the MTA meeting, there was a nine-day early voting discussion. That's about it.
Very good, thank you. I have nothing to add, so if there's no objections, we'll move on to consent agenda. Happy to entertain any motions, I'm curious as to who did warrants, but I think I know.
Yep.
I looked at the warrants for the bimonthly invoice payment program and everything was in order.
Very good.
Move to approve your consent agenda?
Support.
Motion by Rogers, support by Brown, any other discussion? See none, all in favor of approving our consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously, that brings us to new business item A. Second reading of the proposed amendment to Private Road Ordinance 24-01. We did have at our, was our last meeting, right?
Yep.
Was the first reading. And there was reasonable discussion on it, and just for the public's benefit, this means this board has already kind of gone through this at this point. We certainly go through this process, so it gives the public extra, public extra opportunities to provide their input. But with that, Mr. Stuldry, do you have anything new to add to this?
I do not, but we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the administration? If not, if someone's so moved.
I think it's a great idea, but it's my first time, do I say I move to conduct the second reading?
There's a little script there, yeah.
Okay. I wonder how they memorize all that.
Help keep us out of legal trouble.
Right. I move to conduct the second reading of the proposed amendment to Private Road Ordinance Number 24-01 to expand turnaround area design options for smaller private roads serving up to eight lots. And to adopt the mandatory ordinance is ordinance number 25-01.
I support.
Motion by Rogers, support by Lay. Discussion? Just to remind the public again, kind of had our discussion last week, so nothing new from this board?
I think it makes sense to have some flexibility with this type of situation.
Yep.
I would agree. So, seeing no additional discussion, correct? Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the board on the motion to have a second reading and adoption of Private Road Ordinance Number 24-01?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Oh, Treasurer Rogers, that's why she looked at me. Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Trustee Lannon?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Clerk Cody?
Yes.
I caught that it was unanimous, correct?
Yes.
So that ordinance is now in the books, we just have to sign the paperwork for it. That moves us to item B on our agenda, introduction of first reading of zoning ordinance amendments, limited allowance for additional building height. Mr. Stuldry, would you like to introduce this one?
Thank you, and we're asking the board to consider the introduction and conducting a first reading for a proposed zoning code amendment formerly known as PTXT 25-01. It's an amendment to Section 3.4 and Section 6.34 to revise and extend a limited allowance for additional building height above the maximums that are otherwise allowed in the zoning districts. There's a report that begins on page 32 of your agenda packet during the planning commission's February meeting. They reviewed plans for, it's an event center facility at the Mid-Michigan College campus here in the township. They were reviewing preliminary plans. And as the discussion occurred, it was recognized that the proposed building height was, I think, approaching 40 feet, which is slightly above the allowable height in the B4 zoning district. Out of that discussion, the planning commission directed staff to prepare a draft amendment for them to consider and eventually the Board of Trustees to consider that would allow certain businesses, schools, colleges, universities and other publicly owned recreational facilities to exceed the maximum allowed height, subject to some corresponding changes that are often related to height setbacks and things like that. So, the staff did that, the planning commission scheduled and held a public hearing on the proposed change. So, in that discussion, and I guess the highlights of the amendment, there would continue to be adequate light and air because we've adjusted setbacks as it relates to the height and this has to do with neighboring properties. We would also require under this amendment that the fire department look at the plans and approve from a fire. Are they able to reach the heights with the equipments, equipment they have? And then some discussion on conformity with the character of the neighborhood, those kinds of things. So, the planning commission held the public hearing and then at their March 18th meeting, they moved to recommend adoption to the Board of Trustees, which brings us here tonight. And we have the Department Director, Mr. Nanny, if you have some technical questions. But with that, we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions?
I was actually at the, at the planning commission meeting the night that the architect made his presentation. And he did, he had all this, you know, basis covered, it was a really solid presentation and I think it benefits the college.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to introduce and conduct a first reading for the proposed PTXT 25-01 amendments to Section 3.4, permitted uses by district. And Section 6.34, public and institutional uses to revise and extend a limited allowance for additional building height above the maximum otherwise allowed in the zoning districts for public and institutional uses, religious institutions, business schools, colleges, universities and indoor publicly owned recreational facilities as recommended by the planning commission.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Rogers. Discussion? Trustee Lannon?
Yeah, just for clarification for me, I may be missing a point here. But on page 32, the paragraph that's kind of italicized, I'll say, says the building height shall be permitted to exceed maximum requirements up to a maximum height equal to twice the permitted maximum height of the zoning district. So, if we are having a maximum height of 40 foot, is that saying we can go to 80 foot or 120 foot?
That's how I interpreted it, but.
So, for the case we're talking about here, the B4 district has a maximum height of 35 feet. So, it would allow to 70 feet, then twice, twice 35, not twice 40, but twice the maximum height allowed for the zoning district. And that doesn't seem high, does it? But what this, this, one of the reasons this section exists is actually to help work with religious institutions, churches, to provide space for steeples and other religious architectural design owners that need an additional height, depending which faith you're talking about. So, that's, that's one of the reasons this is here. It's also here for the same reason related to other public buildings here, if this is adopted, things like the college, where additional height may be warranted to provide for the function of that space. where additional height may be warranted to provide for the function of that space, function of that building, with reasonable changes related to setbacks and other things to ensure that it works with the neighborhood. But that's really what we're talking about here. Most church buildings are far taller than our ordinance allows. In many communities, unfortunately, in order to build a church, you have to go and get a variance related to that additional height. This standard is in our ordinance, in part, at least in that category, in part to minimize the need for variance.
Yeah, that really was stunning as I read that, you know? We do variances of eight inches, we hear, or a foot maybe, but to double it, just I just wanted to clarify from my mind what was truly being said and asked for.
Any other questions?
Shannon, any building that would be subject to this would be, go through the normal approval process, which would prevent like absurdly tall buildings from being built in various neighborhoods, correct?
Absolutely, yes. That's one of the reasons for this, the additional setback requirement, and for the other provisions that are both in the current section 6.34 and even expanded upon in the proposed, is to ensure that it is compatible with the neighborhood around it.
Just to note, I, my first read through this, I had concerns, but it was really because I hadn't been able to fully process it. It was through subsequent readings of this and looking for answers to the questions I was beginning to have, I ended up being very comfortable with what's in front of us, so. Forgive me if, did you make, someone make a motion on this yet? Okay, I thought you had. Okay, so this is a motion on the floor at this point. Thank you. Other discussion? Motion was to conduct a first reading, correct? Would you do a roll call of the board for this, please? Do you have something, Mr. Stuldry?
Well, I failed to mention that we do have a representative from Michigan College here tonight. Just to make the board aware of that.
Thank you. You do a roll call of the board for the first reading of PTXT 25-01, please?
Supervisor Monkey?
Yes.
Treasurer Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Trustee Lannon?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
By my count, the first reading was conducted with unanimous support, correct? That moves us to item C on the agenda, wastewater treatment, fine screen installation engineering contract approval. Mr. Stuldry, would you like to introduce this, please?
Thank you. We have a report on this item that begins on page 38 of your agenda packet. We're asking the board to consider approval of a engineering and construction services contract related to the installation of a second fine screen located at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $47,500 and allow the manager to sign the requisite documents. The fine screening is meant to, as flows come into the plant, it's used to remove solids and other grit and materials prior to the flows entering other parts of the processing system at the plant. The original treatment plant design and construction, which was completed in around 2001, included the installation of one fine screen. These are located in the headworks, the very front end of the processing facility. We had received a permit for this work back in 1999, and part of that permit was to install a redundant fine screen when operational needs and redundancy ended up requiring it. And in our judgment, that time has come. We do, since we only have one, we do have a mechanism right now. If that goes out, the current screen is inoperable. We have a manual system that can provide some screening, but that presents primarily safety issues for staff to operate that. And over time, you know, the fats and the oils and the greases that come in through the system have increased. Those kind of flows have increased, and that's caused some operation and maintenance issues, which led us to conclude it was time to change that system, add the redundancy, add some additional safety and reliability for the system. The contract was Gordy Frazier, and we do have Jennifer Graham here tonight. If you have any technical questions, along with the department director, Ms. Smith. The contract involves design, both preliminary and final, all the permitting activities, construction services, the bidding, construction administration, oversight, testing. Also involves project closeout and startup activities. We feel that this will directly benefit the wastewater treatment plant system, and then by extension, all the users of that system. And again, improving efficiency provides redundancy and safety. I think those are the two primary motivations that you should consider. The project, as it moves through, could be completed at the end of, by the end of the summer, but that has a lot of dependencies associated with it, permitting and securing equipment that the supply chain and delays at Eagle can sometimes set us back. That's what we're asking you to consider, the contract, to help create that redundancy, efficiency, safety with Gordy Frazier and associates. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, efficiency was, that makes sense to have more, increase the efficiency, obviously, and then the easier on the equipment won't be if it's filtered twice? Less wear and tear a little bit, or no?
I don't know that these are swapped out, and, but maybe Kim can answer that.
Yeah, you can alternate between which fine screen you're using. You know, depending on what style we get, if there could be some alteration between we use one for a certain amount of time and then switch to another, and that could probably be done with a scale.
Okay. I was, read it wrong. I understood it to be, it being filtered twice.
Oh, no.
Okay.
It's only filtered once. This just gives you another screen at the beginning of the headworks that can be used in addition to the existing one.
All right, thank you.
Right, and just for clarification, then only one screen would be in use at any one time. This would allow, in the case that one becomes inoperable, change over to another one and removes that manual process that the manager was talking about.
This is currently an operational issue at the wastewater treatment plant. They get called in the most to deal with the screen. It clogs up pretty easily. And it happens at night, which all that stuff seems to happen. So you usually have one person responding to.
Right.
And then once you start to have problems with it, sometimes it takes several days for it to be fully operational again, so they're working on it for several days.
So this is like a stopgap type situation? This goes into effect if the other one fails, or?
Right now, we only have one, so they would have to manage it.
Yeah, so if we, this gives us a second?
This would give us a second that it could, if something happens with the first one, the second one could be revised. While the first one's being worked on or cleaning.
Kim, as I read this, this would be, if this goes through, then we'll be bidding on the construction of that to happen. This does not include actually making it happen.
Yeah, this is just the engineering and the design, and then once the construction award is awarded, we have to do permitting. So once the design is done, then it's sent to Eagle. You go through their whole permitting process. Once you get your permits, then we would bid this out, and then he would see, similar to what we're doing Pump Station 5 tonight, he would see action to award the construction contract.
Great, thank you.
I think it's exceptional that we'll have a second, but I heard the manager mention safety five times, six times in his approach. That's where I'm falling on this. This manual, I can't even imagine what it is, this manual system that you have. It's not pleasant. Don't need to be there. Don't really need to see it, but understand it. And it's a safety issue. That's, for me, that's right there. That's our, that's our staff out there. So we need to protect those, and I will make a motion if we're good on it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion on this one for sure. Approval of the engineering and construction services contract for the installation of a second fine screen located at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $47,500, and authorize the township managers to sign the contract.
Support. Go ahead.
Motion by Brown, I heard.
Support.
Lay, okay. Further discussion?
It's just a safety issue, something I think we need to do.
Seeing none. Everybody clear on the motion?
Yes.
Better question, is anybody not clear on the motion? All in favor of the motion to approve the engineering and construction services contract? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item D on the agenda, Pump Station 5 construction contract award. Mr. Stuldry, do you have anything you'd like to introduce on this?
Yes, thank you. We're asking the board to consider approving a contract with the Isabella Corporation for the upgrade of Pump Station number five. This is located on Concourse Drive in the amount of $693,000 and some change, and authorize the township manager to sign said contract. There's a report on page 45. This pump station, as mentioned, is located on Concourse Drive, and it services an area along Concourse Drive, Meadowlark Lane, Crawford Road, south of Broomfield, and Bill Braille Drive. This pump station and the corresponding infrastructure surrounding it were installed in the late 70s and early 80s. I think it's time now that it's reached the end of its useful life. We've been televising our sanitary sewer mains and manhole and doing manhole lining, as you're aware, over the years. All that is in pretty good shape, but this existing infrastructure is just reaching the end of its useful life, and so we think it's prudent to replace it before it fails, and then we have to replace it more on the fly, if you will. The board, this project goes back a little ways. The board approved a contract back in 2023 with Gordy Frazier to do the design and construction work similar to what you just looked at a few minutes ago. The, we went through the design work. We submitted a permit application to Eagle in 2024. That permit application kind of sat at Eagle for a while. They were prioritizing their drinking water revolving grant loan program that we were able to take advantage of. That's the $11 million. So Eagle was putting their resources there. This permit application review sat, it continued to sit, and in early '25, we contacted Senator Houck and asked that if he could do anything to help move this thing along. And I think within a few weeks, maybe, we received word that the permit was approved. And so now with the approval of the permit by Eagle, we then went through the exercise of bidding out the project, which brings us up to today. We received three bids for this project. Isabella Corp, RCL Construction, you heard from a representative from that company earlier tonight, and JK Michigan were recommending the Isabella Corporation in part, as was indicated by the, it's within less than $2,000 that the amount bid by Isabella Corp is greater than the bid by RCL. It's within this 3% range. And we've had, of course, a lot of experience dealing with Isabella Corp. And as you heard, RCL, there's nothing wrong with that firm. We've been happy with them in the past. But that's our recommendation. This project, we're upgrading the wet well and all the access areas. We're waterproofing and dry pit, piping, valving, upgrading the electrical so it interfaces with the SCADA system. There is a capacity upgrade from 150 gallons per minute to 350 gallons per minute to, as I mentioned earlier, there's been some increased flows going on, and we also want to size the pump for future increases in flow. This project was part of the approved sewer fund budget that the board approved earlier or late in 2024. We would begin construction this year, and I'm not sure on the final completion date. This is a relatively large project. There's some large components that need to be ordered, and the same, same deal, at least we got the permitting out of the way. So it's mostly just kind of dependent on ordering parts and that kind of thing. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Trustee Lannon?
So I do have a question. I hesitate to bring it up, but in regards to what was brought before us from the, from RCL, it just seems to me at about the last meeting or the meeting prior to that as we were reviewing policy governance, and we were talking about purchasing, and the question about dealing with local contractors, and we talked about how do you define a local contractor? So I guess I wasn't thinking we had some sort of percentage qualification that goes to whatever we're defining as local bidder. So I was just kind of hoping for clarification on that.
As I understand that, it's the difference between a purchasing policy versus we're talking about contract awards. That's how I interpret it, but I don't, Mr. Stuldry, do you want to speak to this?
There's been a lot of discussion over the last several years. As I indicated at the last meeting, we do not have a full-blown purchasing policy. But we do have indication and maybe some other policies that the department's relying on that may go back a ways, that guides us to some local preference. And it's that that is triggering this recommendation. I don't know if Ms. Smith can provide any more detail on that, but...
So there's two dollars, and I can't remember exactly what they are. And it has, it's based on the level of the contract. And in this case, this contract fell into, there's a 5%, and then there's a 3%. This contract fell within the 3% range. And the policy does specifically say Isabella County that they get the preference at those different percentages. This does not happen very often. These are very, very first bids. We have not seen this like this before. I can only recall one other time since I've been with the township that this has been used, but it does exist. We have used it in the past. I will tell you that Isabella Corporation is aware of it. I will tell you that Isabella Corporation is aware of this policy because they were actually the beneficiary from the last time it was used and that was quite a few years ago. So based on the policy, that's, that's what, you know, the recommendation can come. As Mark indicated, we've worked with both these contractors and been very happy with both their work, based the recommendation on the, you know, three percent. They are in Union Township, not just Isabella County.
Right. Did I get to your question?
Yeah, just going further down the line when we look at things like this, it's crossed my mind in the past. You know, you, you could have a local person and certainly I want to do business with, as local as you can possibly do, but if there is a benefit, should you, and not indicating anybody is there, but also look at, you know, our, their due to the township up to date, you know, any taxes, taxes in the rear, any other sort of thing going on and, you know, if there's a benefit for somebody, I think a big picture should be looked at. That we'll talk about in the future, but thanks for the clarification.
I move to approve the construction contract with the Isabella Corporation for the upgrade of Pump Station Number Five located on Concourse Drive in the amount of six-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and authorize the township manager to sign the contract. Support.
We have a motion by Rogers, support by Lannan, discussion. I'll just comment, I've always been vocally a big proponent of local and while I appreciate RCL Construction coming here, I appreciate that they are what I would consider very often local, but it's harder to get more local than Union Township itself. And whenever we can spend our citizens' tax dollars right within the township, I'm, I'm a big supporter of that.
It keeps us, it keeps that money in our economy.
Keeps it right into our economy and for that reason, the amount we're talking about is, is almost unmeasurable, the difference in the...
Sixteen hundred.
The three, sixteen hundred between the three different bids. So I'm certainly in support of this. So, any other comments?
I'm definitely in support of it. I definitely appreciate RCL coming out of construction and coming to the meeting and saying they want to work for Union Township. It says a lot to the staff, to Union Township, that the representative knows that, the answer and he comes in to represent himself saying, we want to represent, we want to work for you. I think it says a lot for Union Township, so, but I appreciate RCL Construction coming in. I really appreciate that.
I do too. And I will add that the same gentleman that was here tonight contacted me originally to talk about this. I, as I normally would, referred that voicemail to Ms. Smith. Those two know each other, they've worked together. And so I just want you to know that they brought that forward. We invited them.
That's great.
Encouraged them to come to the meeting if they were, if they felt so inclined. So that's where we are.
Anything else? We have a motion to approve construction contract with Isabella Corporation for the upgrade of Pump Station Five in the amount of six-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Would you do a roll call of the motion, please?
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Lannan.
Yes.
Trustee Lay.
Yes.
Treasurer Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Monkey.
Yes.
And Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
All yeses, thank you. That brings us to, I don't know, that's a long agenda. Item E, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, ARPA Grant Division C Change Order Number One Approval. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this, please?
Thank you. There's a report that begins on page fifty-two of this agenda packet. As indicated, we're looking for approval for Change Order Number One with J.R. Heineman. They were awarded a contract as it relates to the water treatment plant expansion, which is what we internally have been referring to as Division C. This is all within that almost eleven million dollar grant that we received for a wide variety of different types of upgrades to the system to help us manage this project. We internally broke it down into the divisions, A, B, C, and D, and that's more for our use and our ability to manage and administer the project from the state's perspective, which granted us this money. They don't care about the A, Bs, and Cs. From their perspective, there's a list of work that needs to be done. When we presented the grant application to them, we had that list. We had, we were successful in being awarded the almost eleven million dollars. The bid to J.R. Heineman was approved by this board back in October of twenty-twenty-four in the amount of three million, nine hundred thousand and forty-one dollars and some change. And we have now awarded bids for the entirety of the project, all the divisions, A, B, and C, and D, over the last couple of years. So as we bid out each of these divisions, you may recall that Division B came in, the bid came in higher than what we had budgeted for or allocated the portion of the grant to that Division B. And we hadn't bid out the other components yet, so we didn't know if there'd be any pluses or minuses in those other components. And at the time, the bid for Division B came in considerably higher than anticipated and that had to do with the transmission lines, the transmission line portion of the project. And we had decided and recommended to the board that we approve a contract with whoever we awarded it to for Division B, but in order to fund it, we had to use monies in addition to the grant, okay? And we had gone to the EDA, you may recall, and they had agreed to contribute two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to this project because some of the work's being done in the district up in the Suburton, Pickard Road area. And we had decided and had approval to use four-hundred-thousand dollars of the water fund, fund balance. So we needed those two components and we also had a two percent award of, I believe, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So we needed those three components in addition to the grant money to do the project the way we wanted it done. And so we proceeded on. And since then, some of the other divisions have come in underbid or under the, under the projected budget that was allocated for those divisions within the grant application. So what that's created is a situation where we have available grant funds that we can use as long as the use is consistent with the project plan as approved by Eagle as part of the grant application. And we have available to us, depending on how you count it, we have five-hundred-thousand dollars and some change related to this change order, okay? That we can now look for other things to spend that on within the scope of the larger project. So we have that available to us. We are able to return two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to EDA because we're not going to need it and we're able to not use fund balance from the sewer fund. And if we approve this change order, we will still have a hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand dollars of available grant funding that is still not identified as to how we will spend it. So we have an opportunity here to do additional infrastructure upgrades and maintenance that all fall within the scope of the original project as defined by Eagle. It's a list of things, a total of ten-point-nine million dollars. So we're recommending that we amend the contract with J.R. Heineman as it relates to the wastewater treatment plant expansion in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars and some change. And what we are going to be using that for, and it's specifically on page fifty-four of your report, but we'll... Right now, the project calls for a high-speed pump, one high-speed pump. We're recommending that we have a second high-speed pump as part of this project. That's two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand of the five-hundred-and-fifty-three. And that's for the purchase and installation of, of the additional high-speed service pump. And of course, with that, you'll have to do some modifications to piping and some other ancillary things. As part of the current bid award, there is a pole barn that's being built. This change order, if approved, would increase the size of that pole barn to make it a forty-by-sixty-foot pole barn. And we'd use that to store additional equipment and pipes and other pieces and parts of, that we need storage for. Currently, they're located throughout the township at our, our various sites. There is a recommendation to modify the pipe sizing coming into the treatment plant and associated components. This will allow us to have better continual operations during the construction because we have to stay operational during construction. And then the last thing is an exterior change component that we think will add, make the visual part of the plant more appealing. I think it involves some coloring with CMU or the type of facade.
Yeah.
And so all those together add up to the, I did miss one, a wellhouse expansion by fifty-five thousand dollars. And so all these things are, benefit the system. They don't cost any local taxpayer money. And I emphasize local because the source of the funds at the end of the day is taxpayer money, but it's from taxpayers spread across the entire country because all this is sourced at the federal level. And so we have the money, we've identified the need. Our preference would be not to return grant funds. Why return the grant funds and use EDA money or fund balance? These expansions will not, all else being equal, have any impact on rates to the rate payer. So we think it's a good position to be in and I know this has all been a little confusing because of the way we internal, internally manage the project and allocate the almost eleven million and we've awarded bids along the way for different divisions, but with that, I think I'll just stop.
Quick, quick question for you though.
And indicate that I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I don't figure it'd probably be too terribly difficult to find a place to utilize the remaining, remaining a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars.
We're in the process of doing that, but I will caution you and I've indicated the same to the department that we certainly want, we, we don't want to give the grant money back, but I'm also not particularly interested in going right up to the edge of the fence in terms of allowable versus unallowable.
But I was, I was wondering, is there a expiration date to, to be used by on that grant?
All these funds need to be used. They've all been obligated per the ARPA rules on time and they all need to actually be spent by twelve-thirty-one of twenty-sixth and the expected completion dates for all the, all the work, all the divisions is going to be well within that timeframe.
Great. Thank you.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the, of the almost eleven million, that all has to be spent within the scope in which the grant was applied for originally, too?
Yes.
This isn't money that, just make sure that's clear.
We can't use the money, say, to do anything on the sewer site.
Right, right.
And I think the pole barn expansion is a good illustration. We were going to build one, it was going to be X size. We can add to the size, it's the pole barn and it's within, you know, you add it all up, it's when the, within the ten-point-nine million dollars. And so that's clearly within the scope of the project and all these items are because they're directly related to, in this case, as it relates to the change order recommendation, the Division C Water Treatment Plant Expansion.
Well, if I could make a motion, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve, Approval of Change Request Order Number One with J.R. Heineman for the Eagle Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. ARPA Grant Division C Water Treatment Plant Expans, Expansion Project in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and forty-six cents.
Support.
Motion by Lannan, support by Brown. Discussion.
I think if there's one thing with this eleven million dollars, we've been done, I'd like to scream it more to the, the public. I'd like them to see this and, and how big this really is for Union Township and, and it's not going to cost them a dime once this is all done. I think this is exceptional work. Kim? Exceptional work to the manager and the staff. This eleven million dollars is going to be felt way long after I'm gone. This is a big deal. Congratulations again. Makes me think we talk about. I wanted to make the motion, but you jumped in front of me.
Sorry about that.
I had just one thing I just want to make you, where we still, even with a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, we still are holding contingency at present on this job because for unforeseen things at my time, because we're just starting construction on the plant side. So there is still a comfort level there that we have, we have contingency to, if something happens, so.
Again, even, even better news, even more, more news. That's, that's good. That's outstanding. I mean, it's just outstanding.
I'd like to just mention, it certainly demonstrates the work that's going into i- in this particular one, the, the drinking water and prior things that we looked at tonight, you know, into our wastewater treatments, our enterprise facilities continue to be a priority. Large expenditures put in to assure the safety of both those operations for the community.
And the longevity.
Yeah, many years.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to approve the change order number one for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for five-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and forty-six cents. Anybody not clear on the motion? Would you be willing to do a roll call on this, Clerk Cody?
Trustee Brown.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Lannan?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Treasurer Rogers?
Yes.
Supervisor Milkie?
Yes.
Clerk Cody?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. All right, we have three policy governance items on our agenda. Policy Governance Two Point Five, Financial Conditions and Activities. Mr. Stuldry, would you be willing to introduce this? This is kind of in your wheelhouse.
Yes, thank you. This is, April's the month where the board has the opportunity to review the administration's compliance with Governance Policy Two Point Five, Financial Condition and Activities. This is a quarterly review. At the highest level, the policy states that "With respect to actual ongoing financial condition and activities, the Township Management Team shall not cause or allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities as established in your ends." There are about ten subpolicies under that. I'm not going to read them all here tonight. They are in your packet. I interpret this policy to more than indicate, mandate that there will be no expenditures made or incurred that exceed the expenditures that have been budgeted in the current fiscal year without proper budget amendments, that kind of thing. With the exception of emergency purchases, which are controlled by a different policy, Two Point Five Point Six. The manager shall also not make single purchases greater than twenty thousand dollars. That's a new amount, changed about a year ago. Or fail to inform the board when I've approved purchases of greater than ten thousand dollars. And also interpret this to mean that all, because if you read the other subpolicies that talk about payroll and reporting of things to the IRS and those kind of places, that all tax payments and to other governmental entities are paid according to the state statute. We make payroll bi-weekly. We need to be timely on our accounts payable invoicing. This is all stated better in the written word. I'm just talking to you now, in terms of this interpretation. I think this is a reasonable interpretation. You know, the board in Union Township, they're a policymaking body. You have adopted and approved a budget. You then let the management team operate within the guidelines that are indicated in, in the policy. This allows the board to focus on the long term and not need to get too much down into the weeds. There is an attachment, a financial report, budget to actual for all the funds that have been budgeted for in your report. I can also attest to the fact that there was no debt incurred or issued in the first quarter of 2025. We continue to have healthy fund, fund balance reserves or working capital, depending on the fund you're talking about. Payroll is made, has been made timely. Our reporting to the state and federal entities was made on time. You saw in the first quarter, two or three emails from me where I had authorized purchases greater than ten thousand dollars. So, those were reported to you for the policy guidelines. We do pursue our receivables. And with, I'll point out, a renewed emphasis on the delinquent personal property tax receivable. We're making significant progress in that area. We have more than adequate cash flow, which enables timely payment of all our bills. So, I am comfortable stating that the administration, the management team, is in compliance with this policy. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. All right, so the report was on time. Does provide interpretation, the interpretation is pretty important. Any issues with that interpretation?
Not at all.
A big issue with interpretation is it missing anything from our overall policy? It's quite a lengthy policy. We've made one minor change to it in the past, which the manager alluded to. We increased the authorization from ten thousand to twenty thousand, I think, last year. But does the interpretation cover pretty much the entire policy? Anybody feel we're not in compliance?
Not at all.
All right, any changes?
In the interpretation, I think there's just, where the manager shall also not make a single purchase or commitment unless it falls under Two Point Five Point Six, greater than twenty, or inform the board of purchases over ten thousand. Should be, or fail to inform the board? I mean, I know we're doing the right thing, but I think there's a couple words you're missing.
I...
He says he shall not make over twenty.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. And he, that sounds like his late saying, or he should, and he shall not inform the board.
So, I, when I read this, I interpreted it as he's not allowed to make a commit, or a purchase over twenty thousand. And anything over ten thousand has to be told, like, to us immediately. So, it's, that was my way I, I interpreted it.
But, so it should be, shall not make a single purchase, twenty thousand, or not inform, or, I should say, not twenty thousand and inform?
Yeah, that's the only thing, yeah. I know we're doing it right, but...
It's just the Boolean logic in it.
Sorry, my screen just goes up when you're talking.
It's okay.
I know we're doing it right, but the wording, I think, is...
You're talking Two Point Five Point Seven?
Your interpretation?
Oh. Oh, that, yeah.
Shall not do this, the twenty thousand, or inform the board. And it should be, shall not this and inform?
Or fail to inform.
Or should be not this or not that?
Yeah, right.
That was it.
Good catch. That's like, yeah, that's a math person catch. Okay, are moving on, then?
Yep.
That brings us to Government, Policy Governance Two Point Six, Asset Protection. Mr. Stuldry, this is yours, too.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for the board to review administration's compliance with Governance Policy, Policy Two Point Six, which is titled Asset Protection. This is an annual review to occur in April of each year. Again, at the highest level, the policy states that Township Management shall not allow corporate assets to be unprotected and inadequately maintained or unnecessarily risked. There are seven, eleven subpolicies to that. I won't go over them all, but, you know, it's, we're talking about protecting our assets. There are a lot of different types of assets. There are financial assets, there's capital assets, there's human resource assets, you know, intellectual property assets. And we're trying to make sure we're protecting all of those types of things. So, we need to be concerned about having liability insurance, you know, insurance against theft. We need to make sure that the proper folks in the organization are bonded, were required. We don't want to do things that unnecessarily expose the organization to claims of liability. That's just some of the highlights of the, of the subpolicies. I interpret this policy to say that, that the board wants and insists on adequate theft and casualty insurance at levels that we can replace our assets, that we timely maintain our, all of our equipment, whether rolling stock or not, generators, pumps, all that kind of thing. That when we, that we need to analyze risk against reward and take appropriate actions so that those are balanced, we're not taking unnecessary risk. I also interpret this to mean that we should, our goal is to have what's now called an unmodified opinion from our auditors, which is the gen, the highest opinion you can get when they audit our financial statements, that when we make purchases, we should be following proper procurement practices. And that as important as any of that, that the organization has a public image. And we don't want to be endangering that or putting that at risk. And we deal with that primarily by focusing on best practices. I feel this is a reasonable interpretation because primarily, I think it's easy to interpret because it's well-written. I don't need to add any more to that. I presented some data in the report that, in my opinion, wraps up with a conclusion that we're in compliance with the policy. I've attached the 2025 Renewal Certificate of the Insurance that shows all the types of insurances we have. I've included copies of the tax collection bond that is purchased in the name of the treasurer, because they're the ones that are collecting these taxes. I've also included a copy of a general public officials bond so that you can see that we have some coverage in that area. As you review all the monthly reports over time, the annual report, and just being cognizant of what goes on around here, we put a lot of money and effort into training for a variety of reasons. One of the most important being safety training for our staff. And so, it's been indicated that all the required MIOSHA training has been held. Most of it's held annually. We have conducted specific training in the area of excavation, trenching, shoring up the, properly the construction site. The entire organization went through first aid and CPR training not too long ago. Staff at Public Services Department, I believe, is required to have that done annually. The Economic Development Authority, although they're a separate entity formally, don't receive any direct subsidy, if you will, from the township. But they spend a lot of time and money maintaining Pickard Road, so that continues to look nice. Whether it's park benches or streetlights that get hit by a car, and we replace them. The benches, we have contracts in place to clean up the trashcan area along that corridor. In '24, all the cameras were replaced that are related to public services operations. We are, this year, we have installed, replaced all the security cameras in this building. Those will soon be operational if they're not already. And then, there'll be a few people in the organization that have access to those cameras so that we can review those as needed, in case of an event that occurs. We have a robust asset management plan as it relates to our water and sewer operations. We update that thing, I think, annually, maybe every five years. But it is updated on a routine schedule. Through the course of the year, we do repairs to the shot-off boxes in the, within the system in front of people's houses. We repair fire hydrants that need it, that are identified through whatever mechanism. You see contracts that we're approving, where we're waterproofing, replacing linings and manholes, and we're televising sewer pipe, that kind of thing. We inspect our generators annually. We have a boiler in this building that requires annual inspections. We do IT security awareness training every year for phishing and spam and those kinds of things. We are introducing the multi-factor authentication protocols, so we'll have the dual sign-in when we arrive in the morning at our workstation. That's going to be coming up and being implemented this year. And we did receive a, the highest opinion from the auditors when we presented the 2023 financial statements to the board last May. We'll be doing the '24 presentation to the board in May, as an aside. So, with all that in mind, I think the management team is in compliance, is in compliance with this policy. Thank you.
One question. The bonding on the supervisors, only five thousand dollars, and the constable's ten thousand.
Constable.
Right. Well, townships can have a constable, but we don't have one.
Oh.
We've had one in the history of the township.
You can just receive the standard policy document. And they do this for all the townships, they include constables. I think if I went to ask that they remove that, it would have a, probably no effect on the premium. And it would just involve a lot of work on my part.
Just from an egotistical perspective, I think supervisors should be a lot more bonded than other offices. I'm joking, it's all joking, sorry.
Because of all the cash you need.
Right. Sorry, I just couldn't help myself. So, the report is on time, there's interpretation there. Are there any issues with the interpretation?
No.
It certainly seems to address all areas of the policy. You have any issues with the policy?
No.
No additions and deletions? Do you feel, does anybody feel we're not, are the organizations not in compliance? Okay, moving on? Brings us to our last new business item, Agenda Planning, Policy Governance Three Point Four. Where'd I put mine? Forgive me. I got all excited about the low bonding on supervisors. So, this has to do with, in the back of our Policy Governance Manual, we have a calendar that lists the different portions of policy governance that we do review, just like we are right now. And so, that, that by and large is some of the agenda planning that this is talking about, is to make sure that we're reviewing our policy governance. Just for the public, I'll quickly read the top-line policy. "To accomplish its job products with a governance style consistent with board policies, the board will follow an annual agenda which completes a re-expiration of ends policies annually and continually improves board's performance through board education and enrichment input and deliberation." So, with that, I'm assuming you all are familiar with the details of the policy. Do you believe this board, anybody feel this board is not in compliance with this policy? Is there anything that we should be doing better with this, regards to this policy? Or is there modifications of the policy that you see we should make? Or is there modifications of policy that you see we should make? You're all quiet.
We're good.
With that, if there's no objections, we'll move on to Extended Public Comment. Public, Extended Public Comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we will open Extended Public Comment at 8:25 PM. Thank you. Let the record show, still nobody connected remotely. We have some people here, but they're not jumping up. So seeing no one coming forward, we'll, we will close Extended Public Comment at 8:25 PM. That brings us to managers' comments. Mr. Stuhl dryer?
And I only have one, and it's because I failed to mention this a minute ago, um, when we were talking about Asset Protection Agenda Item 11G. I consider, so you, you recall that we informed the board that we've initiated a civil action against, uh, one of the property owners, uh, based on, uh, non-compliance with the ZBA.
Yep.
Okay? And I consider filing that civil action as a protection, as, as an asset protection. Because from my perspective, it's about, uh, maintaining, um, and protecting the integrity of the ZBA's decisions. And if we just ignored it, let it go, then I don't think we'd be, I wouldn't say it would be violation of it, but, uh, there's a lot of assets in the organization, and we're trying to protect all of them using a lot of different means to do so. It's my one comment, I have no other for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final board member comment, uh, Clerk Cody? Trustee Brown?
Uh, just a couple things. One, I'd like to, uh, thank Trustee Lay, uh, for covering my meeting on the 15th for me since I couldn't make it. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
It was my, it was my pleasure.
Also, I wanted to just talk about asset protection just for a second, and it's funny that our manager brought it back up. I was able to go on the field trip a while ago and see how we protect our assets. Just kind of throwing that back out there again. We'd love to do that again. I'd love to, uh, I'm sure.
What was your field trip?
Uh, you go, we go through the Union Township facilities, and you just, you see the, the water plant, the sewer treatment plant, everything.
I didn't know there was a field trip planned.
Oh, it's, it's a nice trip. Uh, Kim puts on a great, uh, great trip. But, um, to see the asset protections, and I, I wish we could bring the community along on this, because so many people in our community that I talked to don't know what the inside of our facilities look like, and see how much we do protect our capital assets out on the grounds. The manager talked about many other protections of our assets, but I'm talking capital assets, the water treatment plant, the actual physical buildings themselves, the grounds, the pumps, things like that, so. I think we do an exceptional job here, way more than an exceptional job at Union Township. I think the staff does an exceptional job at that protection, so, and just showing it out there. We'd love to get a, I would love to get involved in that again. Thank you.
Well, it's getting nice now.
Yeah, yeah.
Trustee Lannan?
I'd just like to give a shout-out and a thank you to the League of Women Voters who are creating an opportunity as we speak, and, uh, some of us will be going over to join into the program. But they're hosting tonight at the Commission on Aging Building, a, a local government night, which gives an opportunity for citizens to, um, meet face-to-face with, uh, local governmental officials in the county. So, appreciate the act, the, uh, proactive and ac- activity that the League of Women Voters do to help, uh, the citizens and, uh, the governments that serve them.
You're here. Trustee Lay?
I've got nothing, other than to remind everybody who has not registered to vote for the special election that's coming up to do so. Civic engagement, very important.
You're here. Treasurer Rogers?
I need to get my name tag to go to the Commission on Aging.
They have name tags there, I believe.
Oh, that's right, yes, that's right. Okay.
Clerk Cody?
I'm good.
And shout-out to League of Women Voters. I'm excited to go, I hope there's people waiting still for.
Right.
Us, tardy Union Township officials, so.
Yes.
Uh, our new, our new business, we have a motion to adjourn at 8:30 PM. Support, uh, by Brown, uh, motion by Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned at 8:30 PM.